Okay, it is six o'clock. We're here for public hearing for the proposed twenty twenty four budget. It's November second, twenty twenty three. We see with public hearing. Notice is hereby given with the preliminary town of Canton twenty twenty four budget for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty four, has been completed and filed in the office of the town clerk at sixty Main Street, Canton, New York. It has been available for inspection by persons during regular office hours. Further notice is hereby given that the town board will meet and review the budget, hold a public hearing at the municipal building on Thursday, November second at six P M. The public will also send, may also send comments to town clerk Heidi Smith by four P M. Any person may be heard via electronic transmission by Zoom. Link may be found below. The proposed salaries of town elected officials are hereby specified as follows. Supervisor seventeen thousand five hundred thirty-four council members. Each six thousand nineteen. Highway superintendent sixty-nine thousand one twenty-seven. Town clerk forty-seven thousand two oh six. Town justices each thirty-two, three twenty-five, and those are the base salaries of town elected officials. So with that being said, is there any public comment regarding the twenty twenty four budget?
We'll talk.
So.
Yes.
So is there any public comment? Okay, with that being said, I do have three items for the board to consider. And then we can open it up again for public comment. I receive, I, I received the Morley Fire District paperwork and there's a dollar error. Uh, the original amount they told me was fourteen thousand one fifty. It is now fourteen thousand one fifty-one, so we'll change that in the budget. Accordingly, you don't have to take a vote because that's, that's, that's their, their determination, so it was off by a dollar. The second two items, um, the board should have received them or they were in the packet is, uh, as you recall, we requested something from the B F W, um, in writing about, uh, the amount that they requested after our last meeting that we'd make another call. And, um, David Doc's brought in this letter showing what they expended last year. Um, it's not a specific, request, uh, but it's just showing that the V F W cost of flags engraved markers was two, two thousand five fifty-one in the auxiliary costs for flags engraved markers was seventeen, seventeen hundred and ten dollars. We are hoping that we can count on your help to maintain this time-later tradition for deceased members. What the board went with, with the preliminary budget, was three thousand dollars. So that's one item. The other item is another, uh, we did get another request from the Volunteer Transportation Center Incorporated, and you have that as well. They, they have asked, uh, for the town of Kent to contribute eighteen hundred dollars in twenty twenty-four. Right? Any feedback or?
On the V F W, we haven't given an increase. On the V F W, we haven't given an increase in a while, so, I, I don't have a problem increasing that by five hundred dollars. From three thousand or three five hundred. Somebody wants to be talking.
And do you have a suggestion as to where to take that? Um, where to increase that in revenue?
Pick it up. B fund balance. Same place we're taking the salaries or earn the money for planning or whatever. B fund balances. Although, that's not a B expense. That is an A expense.
Yeah. Um, I was just looking up.
Yeah.
Where it is.
That's a tell, that's a tell, that's a tell why.
Let me just see if that's in, that's in area. Yes, that is a, an A expense.
I know it's, I know it's not great. We're not talking fifty thousand, we're not talking five thousand. We're talking five. Unless somebody wants to. More than that.
Unless you want. Unless you want to increase the, you know, we, uh, we did decrease the justice fees to eighty thousand two hundred unless you wanted to put that up to eighty thousand five hundred, that would be a.
Yeah, I, we play around with justice fees so much, we've been burned by it. I would feel more comfortable if justice fees comes in. Five hundred dollars more than what we anticipated, it's going to go into fund balance and it's going to cover that five hundred dollars. But to just try to offset it with, uh, I'm trying to, a revenue that has been iffy at best over the past four years.
And you know what other revenue we're losing is a pilot? Because we do have one, um, pilot that is ending this year.
I, I understand that.
Yeah.
On the heels of that, there are some others that you said are gonna kick in supposedly.
So what were the numbers again, Maria?
Right now, we have three thousand.
Oh, that's right here, Karen.
It's right here on a.
And we went over this year, um, but I think by the same amount, um, you know, we, we budgeted the three thousand, but they put in for an additional eleven sixty-two ninety-five, so we were one hundred and thirty-eight point eight percent over the budgeted amount. So does, does that come to forty-one sixty-two ninety-five?
For what?
That's what.
This year or last year?
That's what we approved this year, even though it was at three thousand, the board went with that to pay that bill.
Right.
So, um, John, did you just do the math and?
Well, I just, I was just doing what the difference was.
Forty-two sixty-one is what they're asking for.
Yeah, because that's.
Forty-two.
Forty-two sixty-one is what they're asking for.
And they spent forty-one sixty-two.
Where are they, uh, somebody help me out there, where are they making up the difference? We only do thirty-five hundred and their bill's forty-two, so that's another seven hundred. So where, where does that, where does that money come from? I mean, are they just gonna?
They did disclose last year that, you know, do what you can to help us out because I just, I did tell them that they were over budget. And they said, well, we can make up the difference. So they, they do have their fundraisers and they have the.
They have their Queen of Hearts.
The Queen of Hearts. They have made donations to other organizations, so I, I mean, I'm comfortable, um, increasing it by five hundred.
Now, it just leaves a seven hundred dollar gap one, right?
And that's good faith on our part that we're increasing it where we have it in a while.
So is the board in agreement to take that out of the A fund balance?
Well, that's where I asked them all, really.
So.
We've already, we've already played with those numbers, so.
Um, the, the court, we just got another two healthy checks today, the court revenue. Where is it? Where is it on here? The justice fees. You know, we're only at seventy-one percent. We, we did budget a hundred and ten for this year. And right now, we're at seventy-eight thousand, but I think we just reached in another fifteen, sixteen thousand.
Not including that seventy-six.
Four. Well, right now, we have taken in seventy-eight thousand five oh one, that's, that's January through September. We budgeted one-ten, so you'll get the report, um, tomorrow, um, of where we're at.
So because you're on the fifteen thousand, you're saying?
We just received today. So we'll see what the, we'll see what the October was too.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, plus we got November and December left, which might not be as.
Yeah, we, we might get close to the one-ten.
We might.
And that's why I'm saying.
Depending on how, um, depending on how November and December go, right? We got.
We only budgeted eighty or.
Eight thousand two hundred.
For next year, so. But like Jim said, though, if it comes in, it's going to go into the A account anyway, isn't it?
Not.
Right.
We don't know. And, and, and I think that makes more sense to do that.
But for accounting purposes, it's easier just to bank that up to right by five hundred than to take it out of fund balance because I have to do, you know, um, I would have to show that for the county.
Easier to say.
It's easier just to.
Increase the revenue?
Yeah, by five hundred.
Oh, well, whatever's easiest then, I don't care.
I think that's the easiest way to take it out of fund balance because then we have to, you know, put that in the books and.
Oh, I see, I guess.
Yeah.
Why did you ask me where I want to get it from? You already knew where you want to get it from. You should have just said that, but.
Um, no, this is integrity of the process here. So would you like to make a motion? Or I'm just thinking.
Make a motion to increase the contribution to the V F W by five hundred dollars. And the offset of that is to increase revenues for court.
To justices, second. All right, everybody in favor of that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so that is, that is another change. Um, what about the transportation request of eighteen hundred dollars?
What do we, what are we giving them to?
Nothing. No, this, this is the first year that they requested. Uh, I think that this is the second letter. We did get also a request from the neighborhood center as well. So.
Um, I think for this year, maybe we hold off on that.
I would agree to. So, Randy?
I'm re-reading. I'm just re-reading the letter, so. It, it's a, I think we gotta make it, if we don't get too much, I'm okay with that. I think we gotta make it known that one of the reasons is such a late request. And then they should make, make the request earlier next year and that's something we would consider. I think we can just vote it down, I think we should let them know that as well.
They sent us a letter a while ago. As well.
Oh, they did?
Yeah. But I guess for me, is when, um, when people request, I really, I am interested in their own financials. Like why, why, through why you need it, right? Um.
They, they tried to explain a little bit in there about costs.
Yeah.
Um, I know a lot of people volunteered to do that, but.
Two hundred and fifty-plus volunteers. According to the letter.
Well, they are and they aren't volunteered.
What, John?
They get paid mileage.
And I wonder how this coincides with the current transportation program for the county.
I think they're two separate pieces.
Yeah, they are two separate, but I'm wondering. I don't know. Yeah.
I don't believe they do. And they do do fundraisers, I know that, they've had golf tournaments, things like that, they've raised a lot of money in their golf. They've had little twenty teams and all sex.
So is the board in agreement that we should hold off on this one? That they could put in for next year?
Plus, I'd like to know how it specifically benefits the town.
Right.
I don't know enough about before I can make an informed decision. I want to know what it does for the town.
All right. Having said that, is there any other public comment? Toby still on?
No.
Okay, well, I need a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing. Okay, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order and does the board, the one item is to consider the passage of the town budget. Um, if we should choose to do it tonight, there is a resolution, uh, that Heidi can pull up. Uh, we have to do it formally by resolution. So, um, I'm personally comfortable passing it tonight, um, because there's still a lot of things that we need to get done, uh, to get it to the county. How does anybody else feel?
All right, and the only, the only thing I was gonna say is that, like I said, you're supposed to be getting that sales tax check, it's gonna be sent out on Friday. But I expect that you would have it by our board meeting. So we could plug that number in and, uh. Well, the only thing we could do, not knowing where that number's gonna fall, is even if we, we could do a board resolution, a budget resolution, or budget adjustment if we wanted to, we'd have to pass it, but. So either way. You know, pass it tonight and then have it to where you need to get it to. And then we can do a budget modification in the budget once the sales tax continues to be anywhere. They think it's gonna make a significant difference, so we do a budget modification and do a resolution for that.
I don't think you can do that. I really don't, I think you gotta, this is for twenty twenty-four. Um, you know, if you wanted to do a buzz, budget amendment after January, but I.
Oh, that's what I'm talking about. That's what I'm talking about.
Oh, you're talking about after January.
Yeah. No, no, we already budgeted, I don't know.
So.
So what comes in, what's coming in now, though, this is twenty-three, how's that gonna affect the twenty-four?
Well, I guess it tells us where we're at, you know, in terms of what we budgeted this year. If the number that I was given is correct, we're taking on, it's, we're taking.
A little bit of nose.
Twenty. Right, but we're already up sixty-one. Get from a, from a year ago, but still, it's not trending, still isn't trending like the way it has been trending.
Yeah.
You know, and I, and I, and what I've been following is, you know, these, you know, revenues have been kept going up, kept going up, kept going up, kept going up, and all of a sudden I wondered why are we taking a dip like that over the same quarter or year ago? You do something quick, you look at a computer and, you know. In retrospect.
So once we get that check, um, we need to satisfy the, um, highway account to return, um, a hundred and fifty-two thousand. And, um, no, excuse me, hundred fifty-seven, one ninety-six intentions, um, will satisfy that. And then what I have been doing is the past few, four years, we've put the balance in highway. Um, what I.
Where it should be.
Where I think it should go, the balance should go in the B fund. Because what we need to do, we'll discuss it at our next board meeting, is we do need to do an interfund transfer into the A account. Into the A account, so my feeling is, um, you know, we need to consider that because our A account is down.
It's been stressed for a while.
Hmm?
It's been stressed for a while.
Months I've been saying this, and so now we're at the point where we have to do it.
But the only concern is we have to pay it back.
We do have to pay it back and legally, we're supposed to pay it back by the end of the year. But this is the concern. We need the money in the bank to get through the rest of this year for the A fund. And, you know, uh, Gray and Gray agrees with it and, um, you know, so my feeling is if we take the, the, the balance of the, the sales stack, we'll put it in the B, and then we do an interfund transfer from the B to the A. This has been coming for a while.
So how much hasn't come in revenue? How much is, how much are we short revenues in the A fund?
In the A account? Well, we'll have a better picture.
Revenue sharing, I mean, what hasn't come?
Okay, so this is through September, I have to look at the, through October, so I'll have that by the board meeting, so. Um, this fires the revenue, you know, we haven't met the justice fees, uh, Canton Central has paid us. Um, Michael's is, is done, that, um, so let's see. We still have the, the clerk fees that need to come in. Uh, we did budget fifty-five hundred, um, as of September, thirty-three hundred. So, you know, this is all gonna, these numbers are gonna change. Dog licenses, we're, we're over that projected. Franchise fees, um, we're only at seventy-four percent. Um, the pilots, I expect in December. Um, revenue sharing, we have received. Uh, mortgage.
There's one more.
Where, there's one more, right?
And that one could be a decent one.
Yeah.
What was the first one?
The revenue sharing?
No, mortgage debt.
Oh, the more, forty-four zero seven three.
The next one should be sixty, should be higher, usually the second one's higher.
Yeah.
What was last year's?
I'd have to look at.
What did the budget?
For this year? Ninety thousand.
Budget ninety, I think that.
Yeah.
I, I think it was at some last year in budget and, and you can come in higher than it came in higher than what we thought, right?
But you have to remember, we still have to pay out our, um, our retirement, um, account for the A and the B on highway, so, um, we felt comfortable recommending a hundred and fifty thousand transfer.
Okay. So that being said, what are we doing in this budget right here? That's going to stop that from happening next year, so far ready for next year?
We're, this is gonna be an ongoing problem. It is, and it started, you know, with, with COVID and then with the, the bail reform and well, sure. Well, that's my view. Like, how did, how did we get into this, this type of situation? Is because the revenues haven't come in.
No.
Right? No?
No.
Okay, well, I guess we can talk about it at our meeting.
Talk about it.
But you know, we have to, we have to do something.
In the meantime.
We have to do.
In the meantime, between now and the meeting, if you just want something to look at, it's in there. I got who's going to the section and see. And look at the very, very here, similar section right here. Look at the tax rate.
And I agree with you, and we, we've increased the tax rate by pennies over the last three or four years, we haven't, uh, gone over the tax cap.
There's the thing right there.
Right.
New York State has not done us any favors. New York State put in this tax cap. And we have been following that tax cap right to a T. State of New York, church hell, doesn't follow it, they spend money like this. But what they have done is they put us in a bind. Now, granted, we did it ourselves because, you know, we always have that resolution, we're going to write a tax bill, but we never do because we think we're being fiscally responsible. But are we? Being fiscally responsible? So we increased our tax rate by eight cents. How much money is that just? Yeah, forty-five thousand dollars. Neighboring municipality increased their tax rate. Giving them three hundred and forty-two thousand additional dollars. That's a fair amount. Yeah, I'm not saying that's what we need to do. No, what the message is that we don't have fund balance in A, which is town ride. The message is that we, we sat and we talked about deficiencies that we have in, in government, whether it be buildings or whatever it is. And we get a price to correct those deficiencies and put them on the shelf. You don't, you don't have the money.
But you know what's concerning is, you know, it, it always hasn't been a two percent tax cap. Last year, I think it was a little over one percent, like that whole formula changes and then the state said, oh, everybody's gonna have a two percent tax cap for next year, but for this budget, it wasn't.
Plus, if you go over to two percent, then you gotta pay it back. You know, there's a point that, that what I understand that is the.
So it, yeah?
I think, I think somebody needs to show me that on paper, right? You know, what that is all going to amount to because, uh, we can't, we can't sustain it.
So the question is, if you take that job and then pay it back, are you still ahead of the game? Which, which you may be, you may be though. No, I mean, I mean, go back, go back, go back.
And remember.
Oh, you'll go back, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but.
Go, go back to your original, yeah, well, then, yeah, you remain over it. But how can you have like a four percent or a five percent or a six percent cost of living increase or whatever? Two percent.
And this is the thing, you remember in twenty eighteen, there was like five or six interfund transfers that weren't paid back. Some for years, and we had to, we had to reconcile all of those, so, um, you know, I think we've done a good job, but we are in a little bit of a situation.
They said, it's the same. Somebody needs to, we need to figure out how to correct it. We don't, we never figure out how to correct this problem.
It's not like we can put a spending freeze on the departments and the A fund either. You know, that's, that, that would be.
That's, that's, yeah.
Everyone needs to touch it.
You know, you know.
No.
It doesn't, again, it doesn't solve the, uh, your problems is always going to be, you know, revenues. But, except, um, I mean, I, the school districts that are overriding the tax caps, just use the balance, override.
They are or are?
They are.
With the.
Yeah, okay, how can they not? How can somebody raise your, how can somebody raise the, the tax rate to three seven two three? Whatever it is, three seventy, whatever it is, and not the override. And I said, there again, we got another name of municipality that I pay you. They separate town operations from highway, two separate lines, they build up two separate lines. And I pay more, way more highway in that municipality. Whole operation. I pay, I pay like three fifty or something like that, first thousand. Yep. And what are they doing? They're paving dirt roads, they're paving nine miles a year, we're paving, we did get, we did get the six. We don't even talk of paving dirt roads. So.
Okay, so.
So I guess again, does that make a change in what we need to do? This budget? No.
No.
Yeah, because we love this rest. It's just, no, this is too late.
Something to think about for next year, though.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So to your point, I, I, I'm ready to approve it.
Okay, let's have Heidi, um, if you could please string up that resolution. Okay, so it's a standard resolution for Heidi, the town board has spent enough time and place that's a. Okay, so it's a standard resolution, whereby the town board has spent any time and place specified in the notice of public hearing on the preliminary budget. And heard all persons desiring to be heard during, that will therefore be a result that the preliminary budget has amended and revised. As here, here and after Sep fourth, is hereby adopted and shall be, and is hereby fixed. At the amount shown effective January one twenty-four. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Motion by Bob Santamar, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? I just again wanna say thank you to the department heads, um, for their due diligence. Um, and being cognizant of the taxpayer, um, and they do a wonderful job. And so I, I just, I know the board agrees with me on that, so. Having said that, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Carried. Okay. I need a motion to move here. Like, what, Jim?
That didn't require.
No, it's not on that resolution, the roll call.
Oh.
I don't think we're on the way. Just the A's and A's and. Okay, to make a motion that we adjourned this meeting, perhaps? Six thirty-two, is there a second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, carried, okay.